Good afternoon, Madam Clerk. If you could call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zakim.
Here.
Madam President, we have full attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like all my colleagues, staff, and guests to please rise. Our lovely clerk is going to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Spirit of life and love which moves through us and through all the world, may we this day be grateful for the gifts of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life we have and hold is to us a mystery and precious. May we this day be reminded of the responsibility we carry, not so that we are intimidated or overwhelmed, but so that we may be true to them, so that we may be faithful in carrying them forward. May we this day maintain a sense of perspective, remembering who we are, engaging the tasks at hand, but understanding our limitations, understanding our own shortcomings, forgiving ourselves and others if we fall short of perfection. May we this day be inspired, be filled with new breath, be filled with new enthusiasm, be ready to see fresh opportunity, new perspectives, unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. And may we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others, the virtue of caring and concern, the virtue of honesty and respect, the virtues of charity, industry, and patience. And may we, I'm sorry, and may the members of this honorable Boston City Council maintain a high sense of their calling. Remember that they are invested here with honor and called to a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing as the clerk leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
For as Counselor Baker and the clerk lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, literally, and just as for all around.
Yeah, I made it up for you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Before, obviously, we get into the ordinary business, we have to acknowledge a big victory. And that victory is for one of our colleagues, Counselor Ayanna Presley. She obviously won't forget us, and we remain partners in the work, but it's a big deal for not only the city of Boston, not only for the Commonwealth, for this country. I think we've all received incredible emails and calls congratulating you, so on behalf of the entire council, the staff, everyone who comes into this space, even those from the past, congratulations on a well-deserved victory.
Thank you.
And I will keep folks updated in terms of transition, and we'll talk about that later. Moving on to the minutes, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 1333, message and order for your approval, a declaration of trust entitled "My Way Cafe Trust Fund." This trust will further promote the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare by promoting the health of students in Boston schools. This trust establishes a fund in the city to renovate or retrofit kitchens and to facilitate serving fresh, healthy meals cooked on-site in various Boston public schools.
Docket 1333 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 1334, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $121,000 in the form of the FY19 jail slash arrest grant awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund crisis intervention training.
Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam President, I rise to request the suspension and pass of docket number 1334 as the $121,000 will go immediately to the crisis intervention training team. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCarthy, who's the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1334. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objections, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1334 has been passed.
Docket number 1335, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $100,000 in the form of our town grant awarded by the National Endowment of Arts to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund arts programming and cultural district planning in the Boston Latin Quarter.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Latin Quarter was named as a state cultural district this year by the Massachusetts Cultural Council. This grant is for $100,000. It is administered by the Hyde Square Task Force with a focus on Afro-Latin arts. It will help create a plan for the district that will shape future programming and opportunities for Afro-Latin artists, and I move to suspend and pass.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey, who is the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1335. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1335 has been passed.
Docket number 1336, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for Love Your Block awarded by donor group to be administered by the Neighborhood Services. The grant will fund a mini-grant for neighborhood beautification projects.
Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Love Your Block program allows local residents to take on beautification projects across our city, across our neighborhoods. I was proud to attend over a dozen Love Your Block events across my district last spring. I always enjoy being with residents and city workers. These events foster community pride and allow neighbors to meet and work together. I respectfully ask that we suspend the rules and recommend passage of this docket.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. At this time, Counselor Flynn, who is the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1336. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1336 has been passed.
Docket number 1337, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant in the amount of $10,000 in the form of a local artist grant awarded by Harvard University Office of General Counsel, passed through the Boston Redevelopment Authority to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund year one of an agreement to donate $10,000 per year for five years to the Boston Cultural Council Opportunity Fund for the benefit of the Austin-Brighton artists and free community arts experiences to Austin-Brighton residents.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So this grant is part of a cooperation agreement between Harvard and the BPDA for the development of Harvard's Art Lab in Alston. The agreement stipulates that Harvard will contribute $10,000 per year for five years and that it will be granted to individual artists in Alston-Brighton through the Boston Cultural Council's Opportunity Fund, so I recommend suspension and passage.
Thank you, Counselor Janey.
Thank you.
Counselor Janey, who is the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1337. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1337 has been passed. Before moving on to reports and public officers and others, I'm looking in the back and just want to acknowledge that Counselor, former Counselor Chuck Turner is here with us, so thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, if we could move on to reports of public officers and others and take docket 1338 through 1340 together?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Docket number 1338, notice is received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding to actions taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 1st, 2018. Docket number 1339, communication was received from Sally D. Glora, city auditor, transmitting reports listing transfers made solely for the purpose of closing accounts for fiscal year 2017. And docket number 1340, notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Cara Elliott Ortega as Chief of Arts and Culture effective September 3rd, 2018.
Docettes 1338 through 1340 will be placed on file. Reports of committees?
Docket 1159, the Committee on Planning and Development to which is referred on August 1st, 2018, docket number 1159, petition of above all transportation for a license to operate motor vehicles to the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston submits a report recommending the jitney petition ought to pass.
Counselor Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So there are two coming. I'll speak on this one first, and we'll, I think, hopefully vote on both of them, or vote on this one and place the other one on file, because the second one was withdrawn. But I'm requesting a vote to pass this jitney application, jitney license application. It's for a service that would pick up and drop off employees at Forest Hills Station who work at Mass Biologics on Walk Hill Street in Mattapan. So we had a robust hearing with representatives from the Police Department and Transportation Department. The only potential minor concern was around how long they would be sitting in the pickup and drop-off area at Forest Hills and that they wouldn't be boxing out other residents who needed that space. The T seemed to be fine with that, and so we'll keep an eye on that. But otherwise, the rest of the route is not duplicative of transit, and then the drop-off site at the business is on private property. So this petitioner had checked all the boxes, and we had a very thorough conversation. I recommend that this license be approved, and so I don't have to stand up again that the second one was withdrawn, so we don't need to vote on that second one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. So we'll take docket 1159, and then I'll have the clerk read the other dockets into the record. So for docket 1159, Counselor Wu, who is the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1159. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1159 has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could read, let's read actually docket 0842 and 1158 together.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0842, the Committee on Planning and Development to which is referred on June 6, 2018. Docket number 0842, petition of local motion of Boston for a license to operate motor vehicles to the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston submits a report recommending the jitney petition ought to be placed on file. And docket number 1158, the Committee on Planning and Development to which is referred on August 1st, 2018. Docket number 1158, petition of local motion of Boston for hire to, for a license to operate motor vehicles to the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston submits a report recommending the jitney petition ought to be placed on file.
So just for point of clarification for the record, docket 0842, Counselor Wu and 1158 want to be placed on file?
Yes, thank you.
Docettes 0842 and 1158 will be placed on file because the applications were withdrawn. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions?
Docket number 1341, Counselor Janey offered the following order for hearing on gentrification and displacement in Roxbury.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. It's often said that there's a housing crisis in Boston. We are certainly one of the most expensive cities in the entire country. Incomes have not kept up with the housing cost, and not unlike other cities across the country, Boston is gentrifying. Just look at neighborhoods like East Boston, Chinatown, and South Boston, and many in our city look to the South End as an example. I spent a good chunk of my childhood at my granny's house on West Canton Street. My great-grandparents bought their home for $2,000 in the 1920s, and just a couple of years ago, one condominium in this very brownstone sold for $1.6 million. This would have been an opportunity for residents of color who were living in the South End at that time to build generational wealth, but like my family, they were displaced as the South End was gentrified. And in Roxbury, we see the same thing happening. Families are being hit especially hard. According to the Imagine Boston 2030 report, housing prices in Roxbury increased nearly 70% between 2010 and 2015, while the city as a whole increased 36% during that same period. That's 70% compared to 36%, almost double. Roxbury families are rent burdened, with their housing costs far exceeding 30% of their income, many paying half of their income on housing. According to the BPDA, Roxbury is 81% renter occupied, making residents even more vulnerable to displacement and eviction. The population in Roxbury is growing, new residents are moving in, and as a proud Roxbury resident, I welcome everyone, whether they have moved to Roxbury from across town or from across the world. As the population grows in Roxbury, we have to make sure that longtime residents who grew up in this community can continue to call Roxbury home. I'm thinking about all of the people that I have spoken to that have told me they have to move because they cannot afford to stay. I'm thinking about constituents who call my office because they're being evicted. I'm thinking about my neighbors who want to buy a home, but the only option they have is to look to Brockton or Randolph. I'm thinking about the families who have grown children still living at home because they cannot afford to move, and I'm thinking about my own granddaughter, who is sixth-generation Roxbury, and whether or not she will be able to stay in the neighborhood that I love. These are the faces of Roxbury, and the community that we have built together is in jeopardy. The city has made some inroads, so I want to thank the mayor and his team for their work, especially Chief Sheila Dillon. With this hearing order, I want us to explore new and innovative ways to create and maintain affordable housing. As more and more land in Roxbury is being disposed and developed, we need to ask ourselves who is benefiting. Do we have enough housing for very low-income families? And what about those who earn too much to qualify for a subsidy but cannot afford market-rate housing? Do we have the right mix of housing, including some market rate? How do we do development without displacement? Let's explore ways in this hearing to use some of the property tax already being generated from new luxury towers as a way to offset the cost of housing. For example, the property tax on the Dalton Tower in Back Bay is expected to generate $10 million in tax revenue. The property tax on just one tower could fund 1,000 affordable units. I think that's a conversation worth having. Let's explore how we can better utilize linkage to fund affordable housing in Roxbury. Let's also explore redefining what it means when we say affordable and affordable to whom. It is my hope that this hearing will provide us with the opportunity to engage residents and stakeholders in a meaningful way to address gentrification and displacement in Roxbury. I'm grateful for the advocacy and partnership of housing rights activists and neighborhood groups, including Reclaim Roxbury, ACE, Mass Alliance of HUD tenants, and the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, just to name a few. There are a few, many of my neighbors are here today, and I won't name all of them, but I think important to acknowledge Bob Terrell of the Roxbury Neighborhood Council for his work, as well as former city councillor Chuck Turner for his advocacy on this issue. And I want to acknowledge their presence and their partnership, and look forward to working with my colleagues as we try to address housing, the housing crisis and gentrification, not only in Roxbury, but throughout the different neighborhoods in our city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you, Counselor Janey. Anyone else looking to speak on this? Add their names. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Baker, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zakim, as well as the Chair, oh, I'm sorry, as well as Counselor Siomo. And thank you, Counselor Janey, for bringing this forward. It's an issue we often talk about across the entire city, particularly during budget season time, so thank you. This hearing order will be placed, or docket 1341 will be placed in the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket number 1342, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Wu.
Counselor Wu moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1342. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1342 has been passed. Moving on to late files, I am informed by the clerk that we have two late files.
And...
Actually, going to take a quick recess. will be added to the agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, they are so added. I am going to start with the first, which is Counselor Janey and Counselor Baker's. Can you read that, Madam Clerk, into the record?
Okay. Offered by Counselors Kim Janey, Frank Baker, and Counselor Ed Flynn, order for hearing on addressing substance use disorders, loitering, and sexual exploitation. Whereas since closure of Long Island Bridge, the South End, Roxbury, Dorchester, South Boston, and other neighborhoods have seen an increase in population of individuals with substance use disorder and other mental health conditions, loitering in public areas, including at the intersection of Melina Cass Boulevard and Massachusetts Ave, Blue Hill Avenue Corridor, and the Edward Everett Square, Andrews Square, Worcester Square, and Dudley Square Commercial District. Whereas while additional law enforcement presence, including more patrols, may be needed, this is a public health crisis first and foremost, and solutions need to be focused on treatment, both of substance abuse and other mental health conditions. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to bring together the appropriate stakeholders to create a plan to tackle the problems of loitering, drug, and human trafficking, prostitution, chronic homelessness, and substance abuse, including but not limited to representatives of the Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Neighborhood Development, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, the Mayor's Office of Recovery Services for Boston's Way Home Fund, the Boston Public Health Commission, the Boston Police Department, Boston EMS, and Massachusetts State Police, the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department, and others, filed in council September 11, 2018.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for allowing this late file, and I ask for unanimous consent to suspend Rule 12 to add Counselor Flynn.
Any objections? Counselor Flynn is added.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And thank you again. I'm so proud to co-sponsor this matter with other district councillors, Counselor Baker and Counselor Flynn, representing neighborhoods of Roxbury, South End, South Boston, and Dorchester. While we know this is a crisis throughout our city, our neighborhoods are hit particularly hard by what is happening with this crisis. I also want to thank all of my colleagues, particularly Counselor Asabi George, Chair of the Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery Committee, as well as the mayor, for their work on combating homelessness and the opioid crisis in our city. We've made significant progress through investments in services and support systems to help the most vulnerable in our community, but I believe, as I'm sure we all agree, that more needs to be done. Just a walk along Melina Cass Boulevard, or through Dudley Square, or up Blue Hill Avenue can be very shocking. There's rampant drug use, alcohol use, increasingly visible sexual exploitation, and violence. Some are homeless, some are not. Some suffer with substance abuse disorder, some do not. Many have serious mental health conditions, whether diagnosed or not. These situations are traumatizing to residents, to children, to those who are experiencing these issues themselves. It hurts our small businesses, and it's just deeply troubling. And this is not one issue, this is a very complex set of issues, and it's important to distinguish between the two and not, between many of them, and not conflate them, whether we're talking about homelessness, or substance abuse, or mental health, or loitering. With this hearing order, I hope to focus on some of these issues and the quality of life that so many residents seek, and really engage residents in coming up with some solutions. I'm sure many of you may have seen the shocking video that went viral of public sex acts happening down Dudley. Since then, we have seen an increase of law enforcement, and we've, residents have been asking, and business owners have been asking, and right now, there's pretty much around-the-clock police presence, which has helped some. But the people who are suffering with these issues have not suddenly become well, they have moved on somewhere else, and we need to do more to make sure that they're getting the help that they need and that we're dealing with the root cause. And I'm grateful for the increased police presence, but I think it's also important for us to recognize that we need to be looking at long-term strategies, that we cannot just put a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. We need a long-term strategy that will help people get back on their feet and stay well. And so while police are part of the solution, we're not going to arrest our way out of this issue. We need to make sure that we have compassion, that we recognize, as I certainly do, that these are our family members, these are our neighbors, these are our brothers, our sisters, our aunts, our uncles, who are suffering with many of these issues. I recently convened a group of business leaders in Dudley, the commercial district that...
us. What we need to do is, we need help from our state partners, we need to go into these other communities that are literally giving their people bus tickets to come to Boston. We're almost the only place in the Commonwealth outside of Quincy and a couple other places that are actually helping with this crisis. Everybody's talking about it, nobody's doing anything. Couple years ago, we had, on this floor, I had a proposal for a tax on alcohol, a 2% tax, that would have gone directly to help the city combat this. We need money for this. It was voted down 11 to 2. We're talking about safe injection sites. Do you really think that a safe injection site, what's happening down there, it's like the Wild West. I challenge anybody to go down to Topeka Street or Atkins Street at 4:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. Hundreds of people down there. Sex over here, bathroom over there, open drug dealing here, open shooting there. I don't think a safe injection site is going to help us, I think it could potentially make the problem worse, but I could be wrong, I'm willing to discuss in this. I think if we're looking at safe injection sites, not to make the conversation about a safe injection site, I think there's 30 things we could be doing before we start with safe injection sites. But safe injection sites are, I almost want to say a feel-good way of people saying, "Look what we did. We put it down on the South End, we put it down on Lower Roxbury, now they'll all go there." No, they won't. A whole bunch of them will be there, but there'll also be more open drug dealing out there. So, the message they've sent to the neighborhood that gets a safe injection site, and I fear it's coming to my district, the message it's sent to that neighborhood is, "We don't really care about you. There's things we can do. Public Works can be down there cleaning up. The police can be making people mildly uncomfortable, not just watching it, not just looking at it, mildly uncomfortable." Another challenge, ask these people who they are. Where are you from? I see them on DOT AV all the time, and I say, "Just out of curiosity, buddy, where are you from?" "I'm from New Bedford." "I'm from Fall River." "I'm from New Hampshire." "I'm from Maine." "We're treating the problem here. We need help. The state needs to help us." And what we need to do as a city, we need to be down there, full force, all the time, and it feels like we're not being paid attention to. Public Works, police, public health, they shouldn't be able to be able to just... It's sad when the people are in the position they're in, but it shouldn't impact the neighborhoods that are surrounding there the way it's impacting now. There's getting people healthy, then there's operation in the streets, what we deal with. As district counselors, we deal with what the streets look like, what the neighborhoods look like. And because we're not being helped on some of these issues, our neighborhoods are being affected. So, thank you for your time, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Janey, and I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm proud to join my colleague Counsel Janey and Counsel Baker as a co-sponsor. Prior to my job as a city councilor, as a probation officer at Suffolk Superior Court, and I helped supervise the homeless community in Boston, and one of my responsibilities was to visit Long Island once a week and to make sure that they're in compliance with their conditions of probation, drug testing, alcohol testing, mental health counseling, drug treatment programs. So, I was proud to go over to Long Island once a week and talk to my clients or probationers over there. I think that's critical, that the bridge is reopened. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of city officials, Mayor Walsh and his team, in working hard to get that bridge reopened. I know the city council supports that initiative, and I'm proud to sponsor this, co-sponsor it. I know how important it is when someone is dealing with substance abuse issues, mental health issues, and making sure also that quality of life issues are also factored in, as we discussed this. So, I'm proud to be here, I'm proud of the great work Counsel Janey is doing on this issue, as well as Counsel Baker. I had the opportunity to talk to John McGann yesterday about some of these issues, and as I was talking to John McGann, Counsel Baker was calling up, asking about, you know, how he can get someone into a drug treatment program. So, I want to thank Counsel Baker for his work, not just as a city councilor, but for so many years as well. So, I'm proud to be a co-sponsor. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
I'm going to take a minute. Thank you.
Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to first thank the sponsors of this order, Counsel Janey, Counsel Baker, Counsel Flynn, and ask that my name be added. As Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, and as a neighbor in an area that is heavily overrun by individuals suffering from addiction and homelessness, and like all of us who know, we all know, that this is not a new issue, and I compliment the counselors on this hearing order and their continued effort to find solutions for those in crisis, and for those that are also impacted so greatly by this epidemic. We have held countless hearings addressing an array of symptoms of the opioid crisis, whether it was part of the conversation regarding the Long Island Bridge, and the Long Island Bridge conversation yet to come in October, the proposal of safe injection sites, or the countless budget hearings advocating for funding to improve how we address quality of life issues. These hearings are important ways to help elevate the work. This hearing will do the same. We have had also additional conversations at many of our civic and community meetings, including the South End Task Force, where we spend our time listening to our residents regarding their concerns on this public health crisis and looking for continued solutions to these challenges. Yet, still today, the problem worsens, and it is time to move away from some of these reactive conversations and move toward productive solutions. I find myself, and I know all of us find ourselves, very frustrated by the lack of progress we feel to be making in fighting this epidemic, and want to ensure that all parts of our government are working together to pursue the right approach. I think to echo some of Counsel Baker's comments about getting all of the parties to the table, that it needs to be an all-hands-on-deck approach, and doing more, and doing it in a better, in a much more coordinated way. Yesterday, I actually emailed all of you, as well as our state colleagues, and those that will soon be our state colleagues, to join together so that we can come together to find some very practical solutions that we, as an elected body, and the pressure that we can put on these other partners, to find the right measure of collaboration and the right measure of pressure. And doing this work, and doing this work together, is so critically important to help with those who are suffering from this public health crisis, who are feeling the impacts of the crisis of addiction and the chaos that homelessness brings to those experiencing it, and to those that are impacted by it. I truly believe that Boston has the potential to be the model for fighting this crisis and to lead the way for the rest of the United States and the world, because we know this is a worldwide crisis. I look forward to expediting this hearing, to getting to this, and I look forward to continuing this work, no doubt in partnership. I would add very specifically, I know that they will be included, but I want to make sure that our Department of Public Health through the state is included, the Department of Mental Health is included, the Attorney General's office, as well as the District Attorney's office is included in this work, as well as the Governor's office. We need all hands on deck, and I look forward to this and look forward to scheduling it soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Asabi George's name, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
I think you, Madam President. I rise to come in the makers and thank them for their leadership and for their passion, and certainly agree that we need to be more coordinated and look for holistic responses, and that we are both proactive and reactive. I would just also add that, you know, what we're seeing is the consequence of all the other things we're talking about here. So, you know, what's happening there is a failure of leadership and collective responsibility on all the other issues that we're talking about here. You have what's happening there because of displacement. You have what's happening there because we don't always see an equitable and funded mandate for an investment in trauma response and recovery. People like my father battled opioid addiction because of trauma that went untreated. So, all of these things, if we don't have an equitable access to a school nurse, a social worker, and a guidance counselor in our schools, if we don't have mental health and healthcare that is culturally competent, you know, all of these things are the consequence. So, I would just, you know, urge all of us to function with the fierce urgency of now on these other issues, because this is the consequence of these other issues that we're talking about. And I would also just add that there's no one-size-fits-all approach to any of this. So, when we talk about those that are living in shelter, and I use that, and we've made great strides at Woods Mullen, but we need to see that in other shelters. Housing first, of course, but for those that do have to live temporarily in shelter, they've got to be treated with dignity, and it has to be safe, and it has to meet the needs of all the various populations. The LGBT youth that I engage with, that are trading sex for shelter on those streets, are there because as youth, they don't feel safe in our shelter system. There is no one-size-fits-all approach to this. For those that are sexually exploited and being trafficked, excuse me, reduce the demand. They wouldn't be doing what they're doing if there wasn't a demand for what they are offering, and many of them have been turned on to drugs to be more complicit in these things. We have one safe house in the city of Boston, and I thank the mayor and the Attorney General and the advocates who part, our human trafficking unit is not funded! So, all of these things are interrelated and connected, and so, you know, what I'm offering here is, one, I want to make sure for every single one of these issues, and I will be helpful in whatever way that I can be, that those that are the most impacted are at the table. I want people that are in the life at the table as a part of this. And then the other thing is, is that we recognize that we're going to have to have more customized, specialized approaches to meet the unique needs of all the populations that are afflicted and that are suffering here. There's no one-size-fits-all approach to this work, and then for all these other issues that we're talking about, access to mental health services, addressing gentrification, displacement, folks working at a living wage, economic mobility, folks not going broke paying medical bills. You know how many people that I meet that are experiencing homelessness that are there because of medical hardship? One major surgery, one incident, just a paycheck and a medical incident away from living on the streets! And again, many of them are living in the streets because they don't feel safe in shelter. So, we have to just, you know, we have to be coordinated, we have to be holistic, we have to address the root causes, and we have to move with urgency. So, but again, I come in the makers, and I wish to have my name added.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Presley's name, and I just want to thank you, but also thank the three co-authors for bringing this forward. I know it's an issue we talk about quite a bit, I think that's true for many issues in the council as well. But thank you, and frankly, thank you, Counsel Baker, for being so frank. We split Dorchester, so sometimes that's appropriate, too. So, thank you, guys, I really appreciate it. Of course, love serving with each and every one of you. This will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Madam Clerk, Mental Health and Recovery. Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Quickly, just going to take something out of order. So, there is a late file to be added to the consent agenda, which goes hand-in-hand with a late file that was filed, that will be added, that was just added to the agenda as a whole. So, if there are no objections, I'd like to take that late file out of order and add it to the consent agenda. Any objections? At this time, that late file will be added to the consent agenda, and I will move later to adopt the whole consent agenda, but for now, I'm going to call on Counsel Asabi George to talk about both of those. And you should have copies of both the resolution, as well as the hearing order dealing with mental health services and recognizing September as Suicide Awareness Prevention Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for dealing with the late files and joining the two right now. So, I do rise today to recognize September as National Suicide Prevention
Sorry, Counsel Asabi George, this is why I have great clerks, we all do. They have to read this into the record, I just can't name it. So, they're going to read those into the record, and then you're going to start all over again, and we're going to come back to you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Assistant Clerk.
Offered by City Councilor Anisa Asabi George and Ayanna Presley. Resolution recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas September is recognized across the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to raise awareness about suicide prevention strategies and resources, educate people how to help others in time of crisis, and encourage people to learn how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. Whereas we, as a body, encourage all residents to practice kindness and to take time to inquire as to the well-being of our family, friends, colleagues, and neighbors, while genuinely conveying our appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. Whereas bringing awareness to suicide prevention can help break down stigma and barriers to treatment, and therefore, be it resolved, that the Boston City Council declare the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Boston, filed in the council September 12, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I do want to first thank Counsel Presley for her leadership on this issue. She has certainly helped and led the way in bringing more attention to the concerns and the concerns of suicide and the hopes for suicide prevention and greater awareness. I do rise today to recognize September in the city of Boston as it is National Suicide Prevention Month, to help raise awareness about suicide prevention strategies and resources, educate people on how to help others in times of crisis, and encourage people to learn how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. Suicide is currently the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States, claiming the lives of nearly 45,000 people every year, or 123 Americans a day. According to the CDC, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, data shows that between 1999 and 2016, we have seen the suicide rate in Massachusetts increase by over 35%. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among 15- to 25-year-olds in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Suicide continues to be a significant public health crisis affecting individuals, families, friends, and colleagues, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. Research has shown that many demographics are at higher risk of suicide, such as youth and young adults, individuals experiencing homelessness, veterans, and the LGBTQ community. I'd like to thank the advocacy groups, the doctors, the therapists, the social workers, the first responders, the teachers, who are very often on the front line and put themselves on the front line of this public health crisis. It is likely that each and every one of us in this room has been affected in some capacity by suicide and mental illness. Suicide is preventable, and it starts with creating awareness and conversation about an often taboo subject. Along with recognizing the importance of Suicide Prevention Month, it is essential that we know the resources that are helping prevent suicide over the long term, which is why I filed a hearing order in addition to the resolution today to examine the mental health resources, such as treatment services, suicide prevention strategies, and de-escalation methods in the city of Boston. And during this hearing, I hope to learn about According to the CDC, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, data shows that between 1999 and 2016, we have seen the suicide rate in Massachusetts increase by over 35 percent. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among 15- to 25-year-olds in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Suicide continues to be a significant public health crisis affecting individuals, families, friends, and colleagues, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. Research has shown that many demographics are at higher risk of suicide, such as youth and young adults, individuals experiencing homelessness, veterans, and the LGBTQ community. I'd like to thank the advocacy groups, the doctors, the therapists, the social workers, the first responders, the teachers, who are very often on the front line and put themselves on the front line of this public health crisis. It is likely that each and every one of us in this room has been affected in some capacity by suicide and mental illness. Suicide is preventable, and it starts with creating awareness and conversation about an often taboo subject. Along with recognizing the importance of Suicide Prevention Month, it is essential that we know the resources that are helping prevent suicide over the long term, which is why I filed a hearing order in addition to the resolution today to examine the mental health resources, such as treatment services, suicide prevention strategies, and de-escalation methods in the city of Boston. And during this hearing, I hope to learn about the better ways that the city can be involved in these prevention efforts, both as a city as a whole, when we think about our employees and how we can support them, we think about our youth, our 57,000 students who attend the Boston Public Schools, how we can support them, and certainly our residents across the city of Boston. By having this conversation and passing this resolution, we, as a body, encourage all residents to practice kindness and to take that time to inquire about the well-being of our family, our friends, our colleagues, and our neighbors, while genuinely conveying our appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. So, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity to speak to this. I look forward to the hearing, and I look forward to not just creating this awareness, which is so important when we talk about it in public, when we talk about it out loud, but also making sure that we have the access points so that people that need support, that need resources, can get them, and the way that we talk about addiction, that they can get them on demand, because it's one thing to be able to say you need help, but to be able to access that help. We need to make that easier. We need to make -- people don't reach out for help thinking, "I might need it six weeks down the road." If they're reaching out for support, they're reaching out for guidance, they're reaching out for help, they need it immediately. So, I look forward to your support on the resolution, acknowledging the date, and I look forward to your support in the hearing in the near future. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Please add my name to both, Madam President.
Actually, before we even do that, Madam Clerk, if you could quickly read the order, not the resolution, into the record, and then I'll come back around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Offered by Anissa Asabi George, an order to examine mental health resources, de-escalation and treatment services for suicide prevention in the city of Boston. Whereas suicide continues to be a significant public health crisis affecting individuals, families, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. Whereas suicide is the 10th-leading cause of death in the United States, claiming the lives of nearly 45,000 people, equivalent to approximately 123 Americans a day. Whereas most suicides are preventable, and creating awareness through healthy and effective conversation can decrease stigma, making access to mental health services more accessible. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to examine mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services to assess the effectiveness of reaching the citizens of Boston, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, filed in the city council on September 12, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilor Flaherty, would you like to add your name to both? Madam Clerk, if you could add Councilor Flaherty's name to both the resolution and the hearing order. Anyone else looking to add their names? Madam Clerk, if you could also add Councilor Baker, Councilor Siomo, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Janey, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Wu, Councilor Zachem, Councilor Presley, as well as the Chair, to both of those. And Councilor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank my friend and colleague, Councilor Asabi George, for inviting me to partner with her on this, and, you know, all of us are vulnerable to moments of fragility and hopelessness, and so we need to make sure that those services are available to all. But I just can't say enough how much I appreciate your speaking out about this issue for so many families who are suffering in silence, in shame, and in isolation, because this isn't an issue that we have really developed the tools to talk about and to work on effectively. We do see an increase in suicide for the LGBT community, our youth, especially young men of color, and also amongst teen girls. And I do think that social media is really playing a huge role in this, as well as access to guns. So, as much as it is about access to mental health services, we know that if there is a firearm in the home, you're 12 times more likely to be in harm's way, and 50 percent of suicides are at the hand of a, are because of access to a gun. So, we have to address, continue to address access to guns and limiting that. There are just far too many guns, but also increase access to mental health services and raising awareness about the issue and supporting these families. And so, I hope that we'll also continue to work with them and to better understand in the same way that we have with those families who are surviving, family members of loved ones that they've lost due to gun violence, that we engage those surviving family members in the same way about this issue to better understand how best to support them and to prevent this tragedy from happening. Councilor Asabi George is 1,000 percent correct. This is preventable. So, I thank you for your leadership and for the opportunity to partner with you on this, and look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Councilor Presley. At this time, the hearing order, which is the second late-file matter, will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery. And then the resolution, which is the third late-file matter, Councilor Presley, I'm assuming Councilor Presley. Councilor Asabi George and Councilor Presley seek suspension of the rules and adoption of the third late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the third late-file matter has been adopted. Moving on to the green sheets, anyone wishing to pull a matter from the green sheets? Councilor Edwards, go right ahead. Which docket and which page?
Page 7 of 13, docket number 1231.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could read that docket into the record?
I'm so sorry. What page? I'm sorry, Councilor.
Oh, 7 of 13.
7 of 13.
1, 2, docket 1, 2, 3, 1.
Yes, 1, 2, 3, 1.
In the House, in the Committee on Housing and Community Development, docket number 1, 2, 3, 1, is that correct? Correct, okay. Sponsored by the mayor. Message and order authorized the city of Boston to apply, accept, and expend federal fiscal year 2018 continuum of care grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount not to exceed $30 million. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless, filed in council on August 22, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we actually pull that committee, just to make sure this docket's properly before the council?
I'm sorry, I just --
Take your time.
Councilor Edwards. We're pulling the committee.
I'm assuming you're a yes. That's what you have to say.
That's because there was such a delay, you probably forgot what we were talking about at this point. I'm so sorry for that. Yes. Councilor Janey.
Yes.
Councilor Janey, yes. Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Baker, yes. Council Siomo.
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. And Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Madam President, there is unanimous consent to pull this docket from committee.
Thank you. Docket 1, 2, 3, 1 is properly before the council. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Brief remarks to my colleagues. This is a basic annual grant that we get from the federal government to make sure that we are helping our homeless population and providing resources to our city government agencies. And so, I would ask that we should suspend and pass and make sure that we're giving the resources, considering the amazing conversation we just had about resources, about how the government needs to do more. So, let's not stand in the way of it.
Thank you, Councilor Edwards. At this time, Council Edwards, who is the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1, 2, 3, 1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1, 2, 3, 1 has been passed. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. May I ask that docket number 0509 be brought before the council?
Yes. What page is that?
Page 1 of 13.
0509. Madam Clerk, if we could read docket 0509, which is on page 1 of 13 of the green sheets, into the record. Thank you.
In the Committee on City and Neighborhood Service, Veterans Affairs, Veterans and Military Affairs, docket 0509, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order for the confirmation of the reappointment of Kathleen Douglas Stone as a member of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for term ending January 1, 2022. Refer to committee on April 4, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could pull that committee, just to make sure this is properly before the council. No problem. Thank you.
Bless you. All right. The Committee of City and Neighborhood Services, Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council O'Malley.
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Edwards. Council Edwards, yes. And Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council McCarthy, yes. There is unanimous consent to pull docket number 0509 from committee.
Thank you. Docket 0509 is properly before the council. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm asking my colleagues to support the reappointment of Kathleen Douglas Stone as a member of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. I had an opportunity to speak to the Executive Director of the Water and Sewer Commission. They informed me that Kathleen Douglas Stone is doing an excellent job, highly qualified in representing the water and sewer very well. I also spoke to the mayor's office about this as well, and just want to respectfully ask the support of my colleagues for the passage of this docket.
Thank you, Council Flynn. At this time, Council Flynn, who is the Chair of the City, of City and Neighborhood Services, Veterans and Military Affairs, is recommending the confirmation of the reappointment of Kathleen Douglas Stone to the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. All those, obviously seeking suspension of the rules to do this, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1, 5, 0, 9 has been passed. Anyone else looking to pull from the green sheets? Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda. We had one late-file matter earlier, which has already been added. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. And before we move on to memorials, and he may not like this, but I think I, along with many other colleagues, would also like to applaud our colleague, Councilor Zachem, for his courage, his courage to run, and not just his courage to run, and not just the courage to run, but also how he represented this institution, the council, during that run. So, thank you on behalf of all of your colleagues, the staff, past and previous, and to your team as well. Congratulations, and thank you. Council O'Malley?
I don't mind.
Oh, see? I told you. So, at this time, I'd like all guests and my colleagues to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Council Janey, Daniel Sonny Cruz, Sr. For Council Wu, Sharon Kelly. For Council Zachem, John Diabakely. For Council Siomo, Eleanor Scheifner. Helen Cupris, Teresa McDermott. For Council Flaherty, Bernard Kelly, Bridget Mary McCarthy, Diana Green, Joseph Griffin, Marie Conley, Thomas Prokosky, Walter Harris. For Council O'Malley, Charlotte Ray. For Council Campbell, obviously for myself, Timothy Cooney. For Councilors Flaherty and McCarthy, Joanne, or Joannie O'Connell. For Councilors O'Malley, Zachem, and Asabi George, Lino Maurice Lee Gubert. And of course, we want to absorb a moment of silence to honor those and all those who were lost on September 11. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, September 19, at 12:00 noon in this chamber at the Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council -- Does it have to be made now?
It doesn't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
The council will be adjourned. Thank you.